Need a whole meeting at five thirty one P M. Um, we, I did hear from council member Schaefer, he is traveling, so not able to be here today. Um, but we have a forum, so anything for the good of the order before we get started? Uh, how's my answer?
Yeah, I actually have several things, I'll try to be quick. Um, first, I sent a response to the written report on the request applicable for the municipal financial sustainability plan. And I'm not sure if that can get forwarded to the rest of the council, just to make sure that my input is that possible.
Um, city administrator will do that upon her usual vacation, um, she received it while she was on vacation, which was regarding that.
Okay. Um, so then, um, also, let's see, um. Secondly, I was approached by, uh, Mr. Thomas, who is a corporate teacher up at Cedar Crest. And the Future Farmers of America group, uh, club team, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what they're called, but, um. They would like to do a community sort of project and apparently in the past they planted bowls. I think at one point they planted them out by the welcome to do the ball sign by the bridge. And they were wondering if they could have permission to do that again, and there might be another location they wanted to do it at, just to be for ideas. Um, if they could have permission to do that and also wanted to know if there could be, um, a donation from the city where we can provide the bowl. So I think that that might be the report that's coming today. And then the other item is I had been approached by someone else about the viewing platform or stage at the depot park. And that used to have, um, it wasn't fully covered, I guess, but it had enough of a fervor that you could, um. You know, put tarp or find a way to cover it, but that had been removed several years ago, just it had gotten older and wasn't. And I'm assuming safe anymore, anyway, they're hoping that we split up some kind of a new covered roof, um, and have it. Usable as a covered stage for events that happen, um. You know, even in the summer when the sun is hot, it'd be nice to have a cover, so. I think that staff has been looking into that, but I just was wanting to share that with council and find out if there could be an update on timing or. There needs to be some kind of funding, um, approval for something like that. And then finally, um, I was also curious as part of our economic development, so, uh, council committee. If there was any update on possibly meeting with OSSO, because I think the economic development grants might be coming up due again, and so I'm not sure. We're gonna have a meeting with OSSO, um, to find out what they. Might wanna submit and how that might work with what we're interested in, but I wasn't sure where we were at with that. And I have that.
Thank you, Councilor Minister.
And this is sort of more important to some of the council, probably already is aware, had a little bit of outreach, but the, um. Cynthia and I had intended, uh, the opening of crosswalk in Redmond, um, had been put in place and. You know, it was disappointing over the, the weekend, there was some vandalism, I know the police department is investigating, but. Um, you know, there was, uh, again, it sort of brings up some issues that we've dealt with here in the past, just in terms of concern and, and. That was such a sort of a bringing together, you know, a large swath of different representatives from different cities, but it opened, there was a lot of excitement. It was all disappointing to see that, and I know they're investigating and my expectation as the city will work, you know, with to have that. The crosswalk restored, but again, we're prepared to monitor the news, it was sort of a low point of, of the president's city.
Yeah, I was like, I'm gonna piggyback on the wrong customer or partner does that, um. If I think it'd be a nice gesture if I was saying words and letters for it. Anything else for the good of the order?
Oh, I heard on the news that they're waiting for the weather to dry up before they could go.
Yeah.
They need to.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't think we really have anything on the consent day that, you know. Might have questions, but just our review of regular meeting agenda would usually include that, I mean, that me. Thank you. Um, so that our first discussion item is, uh, conversation, not an end to items for the council retreat. Um, so if you recall, we talked about, let's see, what's the date, I think it's March twelfth, I wanna say, which is our second Tuesday of next month. Um, just since that's usually a time that most of us have in our calendar. And so I wanted to just make sure, I think I have a good idea of what we wanna talk about, but. There's a lot of things, so I just wanna make sure we discuss what you want that agenda to look like, and that way we can narrow it in a little bit more. Think a couple of the key things that have come up, um, is one of the smaller things would be. That one council procedure of asking one question per turn, we had had some discussion last time about would that be easier? That's kind of tricky to manage sometimes, so would a clock or, you know, a time be easier, um, so that you can use that however you want? So anyways, that might be, might be a conversation that we have at the retreat if everyone wants. Um, the other big thing I would really like for it to fall during this time though would be. Discussing council, um, budget priorities, and I think that would be like bigger, broader vision type stuff, and then looking at maybe smaller bowls that could. Help facilitate those larger dreams, I suppose, um, and then that way, of course, we would have had those discussions and then also when the mayor and staff are doing their budget. That, you know, they would have heard those things from us and can take that into consideration. So those are the two big things, knowing that likely we don't wanna go past, you know, nine o'clock at night. Um, yeah, that can take a lot of time, and so I don't know if we just wanna go around. Tell me if there's anything else, or we could put on a list, so we could always use that second. Tuesday to list any hollow items, you know, if we run out of time, or if specifically around the budget priorities, is there a way you want that process to look? You like having the big sheets of paper up on the wall with like, um, will you save tape speed, I think, I saw it walking. Sorry, I'll be careful on the halls, but, um, you know, with the stickers and voting and that kind of thing, I mean, I, I wanna know like what you want it to look like and how we can make it meaningful. Um, and make sure if there's anything else on the agenda for the retreat that you'd like.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think that in and of itself could have got a large. If not the whole meeting, between back and forth, I think the one, you know, asset I would have is, um, you know, I think it is. I use what, uh, action to sort of recalibrate and review and, and I think one of the things that challenges we've had in the council though is. Things that seem to be carrying through over, over time, but ideally, you know, long-term priorities, there are gonna be short meeting, long-term priorities. Those long-term priorities ideally should not be changing, there did not be a lot of turning, and I know we've got, we've got new members of the council, so I think. You know, how we arrived at some of these, but it would also be good to sort of use that in addition to whatever we. Identify as part of the process for the going forward, to also have a opportunity to look back and see how those align. Are they the same, are they different, if they're different, why are they different, in your words, we're just not following up on items or, um, but, but I think, you know, that, that additional exercise or. Part of the process would, would make the overall, um, exercise more, you know, neutral.
Um, yeah, but I, I think for me, what would be helpful is if we were to have a re-try to redesign and maybe of not. In a several role.
Yeah.
A quick refresh on Robert's rule of the order. Um, I mean, I'm still thinking about that, we came back to that, and also, um. In those notes, they, the Jurassic Parliament mentioned that you start off the discussion with a motion. And then, then council members talk about the motion and then vote, whereas. It seems here we're gonna have a, we talk about it and then we have a motion.
Yeah.
So I, I mean, I, kind of like to see it, the motion brought forward first and then discussed. Cause then you can make amendments while you're discussing it.
Thank you. Yeah, I think there's a way to do a quick in-depth version of some of the key things that would be useful for us.
And make the motion now, point of view.
Yeah.
A little bit of.
Yeah, those were fun. Yeah, that's true. Well, no cheating. Anything else, I mean, I do feel like that will mostly fill up, and that was really helpful, I think, would it be helpful if, um, I, I don't, wouldn't go too far back, but from some of our last. I think, I'm thinking of at least the very last budget sort of, I don't know if we called it a budget retreat or what it was, I just remember there was that one where we had the big goals and the small things. I can find all those documents, like, cause they're just in my email that I emailed, uh, emailed the council in the past, so if that'd be helpful for me to pull them. Put them together, recent amounts, everyone can look through them, and maybe that helps, you know, make you think of things, or at least see where. The last few years we've come from and then how that, like you said, those longer term goals probably aren't changing very much, but where are we at with them, and that might help.
Knowing why, why they change, I mean, definitely think they're the part, it's important to know why you want something versus also why you don't. Maybe it's a function of people for this conversation.
Yeah, okay. Um, and then, you know, past that, so, and then, yeah, I mean, I think, so we had also talked about possibly having. Um, our city attorney there and, um, the other attorney as well, and kind of be able to do a little intro of them, and I think it'd be great to pick their brain on. You know, that one part of our council procedure that we had discussed of like, do we wanna look at that and maybe try something new, and if we need it, we could always change it, but maybe it's time to change that slightly and, and see if it. Works better for our group. Um, but beyond that, you know, if we end up using up another Tuesday and we have more things, maybe we wanna go more in depth on Robert's rules, past it by three track. Um, oh, I didn't finish my interview of councils role, like we brought up. Best practices. Are there other topics that maybe won't make, um, this retreat, but that you would want to follow up? Often we would do two retreats in a year, that hasn't always happened, and there's no pressure if we don't want to, but if there are other trainings, things like that, that we want to. At least put on like a parking lot so that we have a slight agenda for the next one if we need to. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know what budget we have for some of this stuff, but again, given some of the, the churn of our council. And there's various versions of it, but you know, sort of whether it's the inside training, or I think we did one couple, um. Retreats ago that was very in-depth, it was a little more, but I think in terms of, you know, your style or your data person, are you, uh. An empath, are you, I mean, there's different variations of that, and I think it helps both in terms of interpreting what people say, but also, um. Uh, you know, essentially communicating what your preferences are as to the, for our group, if there's a lightweight, not too offensive.
Yeah, we might be able to find, like, it's almost, it sort of serves as an icebreaker, maybe, right, um, at the beginning, sometimes, and there. To save time, sometimes there are things you can do ahead of time, um, I know Colby was the one we had done for a while. Yeah, I mean, there's different ones, and we can look at that too, I don't know, did you guys like the Colby score? I know you've probably done a lot of different ones.
Kind of intended a, off and ask the case right in the middle, like the bullseye.
Yeah, I'll hold it, it didn't quite come in on that, but.
But yeah, there's some versions, and I can even take that as an actual, cause we use a lot of them.
I would have figured you might, yeah, cause I did that from them as well. Okay, um, that I can, yeah, I mean, do you want to, are you gonna take that on then and get back to us if you have some suggestions?
I'm happy to.
Yeah.
And then we can sort of see what they.
Yeah, and I could send them to the city, yeah, and see what they think. Yeah, okay, cause I mean, we might be able to use that in depending on the timing, probably an emphasis on anything, the Colby one I thought was a little in, time intensive, you know, but it was thorough. Like, they wanted an interview with you after to talk about your results and that kind of thing, but it took up time, so, um, okay, so.
What is that?
The Colby, it was, um, it was focused on how you make decisions, I think, right? So it wasn't a personality, it wasn't, uh, but I, oh, there were a lot of people in the group that were fact finders, meaning you want the information in detail. Do you wanna do the research before you make the decision, and then there's other people who wanna try and experiment first, and so they're just different. It's like your intuitive way that you approach problems, basically, so.
I don't know, call that.
It's always a good, um, I don't know, I think it's a good icebreaker, and it makes you, I don't know, bond a bit and see each other a little differently.
But I mean, um, I would also recommend looking into some pos- positive intelligence analysis and training. Um, if my workplace, um, it's, it was piloted last year and it's been extraordinarily successful and. Um, there's been major changes in how people function together, um, through that course and how they react, um. To challenging issues, so I think that that could be, um, another thing to look at, because it gets beyond the personality and how you communicate, and it actually gets to you. As an individual and what your sattures are, what your tendencies are personally. Um, and provides tools with how to break out of those patterns that we all develop from the age of childhood on. Um, so it's, uh, I know that they do some courses that are, um, short, uh, but there's also an opportunity potentially to do some much more in-depth work at the city level. Um, that I think would be very beneficial, not just to.
Thank you. Positive intelligence, too. Program, so, okay. Um, anything else, um, with our retreat that you wanna possibly see on the agenda or? So we're gonna revisit, um, long-term goals. Is there a specific way you prefer to engage on that topic, I mean, do you like having things up on the wall where we write out some ideas, do you like? Um, I'm getting stickers to put priorities, I mean, what, what is this, I don't.
Are you going to present the long-term bowls and then we're gonna discuss them, or what?
I think I can send you all what I have from past retreats and then you, we would all together.
The long-term bowls were distributed to all?
There are ones the council has come up with before, I think they mostly align with, you know, administration as well, they're pretty.
Mostly.
Mostly, yeah. But, I mean, it's just as a council, what do you identify with, you know, I think they probably wouldn't change much, but I can send out everything we've had from the past couple of years. And then you can look at it and make the guidance. Oh, yeah, 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 I'm planning on it, I can go through my email this week and send it out soon, too, so you have a chance to, um, peruse through it, there's quite a bit. But there's also what we put together for the last biennial, the current biennial budget, you know, there's our summary page on, um, a bit of it talks about some of our old discounts. But I can put all that together, and one email, but we need to find, um, and you gotta look at it, and then if you think of anything for the retreat. New ideas that you don't see on the papers represented, then you can send them and we can bring that up at the retreat and talk about it. And what would that look like in a budget sense, sort of type thing, too?
Uh, Director, comment?
I think we have a lot of items, and I don't know how many you have at the retreat, and I've written down eight items, so we think at some point we'll want to narrow it down. Cause we'll have to make sure, we help get the council prepared, especially if we're gonna do these sort of training.
So, yeah, my, my goal and what I was hearing sort of ignorance on would be that we are gonna devote a chunk of time. Smaller chunk of time with our attorneys to talk with them, but then also maybe hash out that council procedure item. So maybe an hour for that, and maybe two to three hours devoted to budget priorities, um, if we throw in any extra thing like an icebreaker, maybe that's half an hour, or, you know, if that aligns with. That idea for that would be heavy on the doing the work before the retreat, not in the retreat probably. So everything else I got brought up, um, I mean, yeah, Robert's rules, that'd be tough, but that would be easy to throw into another cow as well, honestly. So I, I think the idea was, we're trying to bring out ideas, but what's the priority for that March twelfth meeting would be probably. That one council procedure, have some time with, um, you know, our current and other attorney coming on. And then the, um, goals for the budget or priorities for the budget, that would be the main thing, that way. The mayor and staff have that, you know, in a really timely manner, and then all the other stuff, you know, we can use up another cows and fill in, yeah. But I think those are the priorities, is that any objection, or does that not capture what you were thinking, or does that sound okay? Yeah, okay. Um, all right, so that didn't take too long, so the next item then, we'll go ahead and move on. Is a discussion on community engagement on the matter of fireworks in the city of Duell. So to start this conversation off, to be very clear, this is not a discussion on our personal opinions on fireworks. This is a discussion on, number one, is this something you wanna talk about as a council? Number two, how would you wanna engage the community and gather information? Well, you know, how would you present information to the community and also for the feedback, what does that look like? So, one thing that pops in my mind, I know, well, a long time ago, but gosh, I don't remember what year that was, there was an advisory vote, um, on a ballot. That informed the council at that time, that's what they chose to do. Um, you know, for me personally, I struggle with that a bit, you know, cause what do you do if it comes back forty-nine and fifty-one percent or something like that, I mean, at the end of the day. You know, council would have to make a tough decision on the course for the city, so again, this is what would you want to see to have this kind of conversation about fireworks? In Duell, is this something you even wanna talk about as a council, those are kind of the two big things, is that, do you want to, and if so, what kinds of things, town halls, surveys? What are you looking for to engage with the community?
Well, great, I think survey would be enough with starting. Um. And maybe, you know, get some alternatives to fireworks, like we have really cool, really light person out there where it's all. And our paper.
So I'm putting that under, um, under survey, maybe the, um, making some bullet points of like, as a thing, would you rather learn, right, like that? What, what's the community's interest level in alternatives as opposed to where?
Or maybe we explain the alternative to our day.
Anyone else?
For, for me, one of the, the challenges, I mean, to go back to your earlier point of like, do we wanna talk about this anymore, I think. You know, even before whether we do a survey or town hall or solicitude back, I mean, I'd love to, and I'll be transparent that I haven't dug a lot into this. Topic myself, it's kind of, it's a little bit outside out of mind, but, but in, in the sense of, you know, what is the prevailing guidance from the state, what is the guidance from the fire department? You know, with, with climate change, have the general rule changed, have we seen statistically more accidents and fires, you know, a trend that would, would drive a change in policy? Because to your earlier point, you know, maybe there are gonna be folks that fall on both sides of this, it resonates from a family, you know, um. Tradition to, uh, you know, send the children, the dog, I mean, there, you can, all kinds of things, so, but that for me, I'd love to come from, uh, essentially. Having some data behind driving a change before the stirring horn, or metaphor, but. I think an advisory vote would be the surest way to know whether there'll be fireworks in Dingle or.
Hmm, man.
Um, I hear you, uh, council member, um, we did an advisory vote, but we also, I think it's important to recognize that the demographics of our community have changed significantly. Um, we have a lot more people that live in our community that are impacted by fireworks that are not eligible to vote as citizens. Um, so, um, I can share what I think the community is, that they want council to take action. Um, so, um, they're asking, and I've had multiple, um, contacts, especially even in more so in the last four years. Wanting council to take that formal action, um. And vote and ban them. Uh, just point of information, um, I'm gonna share whatever, whatever else offline, but, um, I think it is important to note that you have a much. Larger population now that isn't ours, so just be, um, that was.
Councilor, that's okay.
Yeah, um, I hear that point and as well. I think the tricky thing is going to be, if you do a survey, how do you restrict it from people who live inside the city? Or it doesn't get skewed dramatically by, you know. It being promoted, so, you know what I mean, it, it's very difficult to get a, what is it, a statistically significant survey that is, um, accurately represent. Broadly within the community, but then also the advisory vote, the treaty, some people can't vote. I don't know what the answer is, um. But I do know when we did a town hall, surprisingly, people did not show up, which was really disappointing. Um. And I know people have a lot of opinions about this, like it, it doesn't, people not coming to the town hall does not mean people don't care. People care a lot on both sides of the issue. And, um, yeah, I wish I had an answer, but I do know it could be tricky to just have an open survey that anyone could just. You know, people could answer it, and I can say that was about it in my different ways, or I, I don't know how to do a survey or voting. You kind of have to pick the least, um, problematic one, which, anyway, that's kind of where I'm at.
Um, I'll go really quickly, then I'll, I'll come back to you, um, I, yeah, so I'm not opposed. As of right now, I, I can go both ways on, on an advisory vote, I don't see it as like, like essential right at the moment, but I hear the points about it. Um, survey, I like as a soft way to gauge the community's initial interest, but I hear those concerns too. I think there's a balance between adding enough questions that might make it annoying for someone to answer them the whole time. Without making it too cumbersome for them to actually give their input. I also know, I don't know if A W C still does this, but I had been reading through some stuff and like they, oh, don't they loan out or, um, the button things? We did that at one town hall before where you can, now, I, I know the town hall thing was like kind of wah-wah, you know, uh, it wasn't, there was just not a big turnout, and I'm not completely sure why. I have to look back at the specifics of that, but if we got to a point of doing some kind of community hall, cause I know we did get a big turnout for the third avenue one, I mean, that was really great for. You know, bring it to, you know, fireworks market, really do a lot of outreach that way, um, that you could capture people in person. Now, similar problem to if you do a survey, you, how do you know you're not asking people their address or, you know, when they come in, right? So I think there's just a hope that you're mostly capturing the, the residents, that people who live here now, some that might be restricted, not able to vote, or some that. I don't know, so I, I think, yeah, you're right, I, I don't know what the solution is either, um, but. Survey potentially could be the lowest cost initial soft way to start getting that input from residents, Director Thomas?
Uh, you could do a mail survey that would only go to the community. Then they could go to the link or they do have, or doesn't mean that keep them, there's always ways to, you know, right? There were some things you hand off to, and it's only twenty people, that might be, or, you know, that we did for the town hall, open space plan. Um, it is expensive, because you're gonna get them either paper copy or barcode, and so, it can be several thousand dollars to do that. How's the number couple?
Oh, I was kind of surprised to hear that there wasn't any public participation in the, in the town hall for. Cause I don't remember, I don't remember hearing about, I don't even know when it was, but, uh, I think that would be a good idea too, survey, town hall. Multiple ways to reach the local public.
Were you talking about the community one when we were looking at the emergency restrictions, precautions, is that the one, cause not a lot of people showed up to that.
It was that one, and I don't know if you would describe it as a town hall or.
Yeah. It was an open house.
Right, I think that's more what it was called, but, I mean, it was on social media and I, I think.
Yeah.
It was advertised and. Surprisingly very.
Yeah.
But the one other thing I have a question about is when we did the advisory vote.
But the one other thing I have a question about is when we did the advisory vote, my understanding is we have something else on the ballot. And so adding an advisory vote is very inexpensive. But I think that if we just did an advisory vote without already having another item on the ballot, it would be extraordinarily, um. I don't know extraordinary is the right word, but it would definitely be more costly. I think before it was just. You know, you already have to have a special note and all of them, you can add it.
Could be on par with a mailing survey possibly, at least if you found that.
I did follow my point, um, if you did and were, uh, for a survey, I think they can not only do our kind of access to it, so. It's a digital and then you can share it, so.
Yeah.
You know, you're, you're getting cracked at it. Uh, I think, boy, ten to fifteen grand for an. Advisory vote without another.
That's, is that what you did? Yeah.
Yeah, it can be, but there might be a way to do a nice.
But if you do it during another election, then less.
Sure, some good idea, but on the other hand, it wouldn't pass our, and then we're just gonna have it speaking nice.
Not necessarily circle back, but I think one of the challenges with this topic, as with many others, I mean, it's been. Techno, it's, it's sort of one of those polarities, you know, there's not a lot of folks. There are going to be some people, you know, really don't care, but usually you're gonna, the loudest voices on both sides are gonna be the. Uh, majority and, and there are, you know, other things I know, there's number of the churches or the church, I mean, there's revenue and taxes. Abroadly, I, I was just gonna say, I mean, for me, both the surveys and it, it does provide a pulse, I think you have to be really careful. To couch it in an advisory, this is not, you're not voting because one, it's not always necessarily representative. And then at the end of the day, I think a decision the council makes needs to be based on more. Qualitative, I mean, that's, that's why I kind of come back to the data sometimes, is there a safety, is there a fire, is there a? Um, but, um, it's kind of one of those topics where there's not gonna be winners. For say, that was my only concern about the surveys, particularly when you don't have consistent turnout, it's not necessarily like. A bond or something where you're, you're gonna get pretty broad, um, um. Just, just to, again, if we, if we go that way, just be very careful to look at the. Sample sizing all of in terms of how we figure that in, in, when we serve the next steps, because we're. Again, lucky that regardless of how we take, not get a sample that fully represents that.
So a clarification on what, are you, are you saying like before you would want to survey the community? You would maybe want to have like the fire district come and speak with us or some kind of informational presentation and start it off or?
I think my, my point is particularly that's based on the cost that Director Thomas and, and that's the knowledge is. We either need to be prepared to take action. I, I wouldn't be for doing ten thousand, you know, a ten thousand dollar investment unless we knew. We were prepared to take some action or that was in sort of directional, direction, guidance, you know, the direction we're going. And I think based on that, having that body of knowledge in terms of. Whether it is the fire district, I know they kind of make the call in that given moment around burn, ban conditions. But this is, I think, broader than that. This isn't the, the binary, we're gonna offer them or not based on term safety conditions. This is more almost a quality of life issue, you know, how we're going to, to make a, a policy change. And I think it would be good to have that information in hand before we send out anything. Particularly if it's a low cost, you know, we have a resource we can leverage, we've got. You know, someone either at a state or county level, if we have other cities that have already gone through this process, there's learning that they can have that. And drive anywhere else. I don't know how easy that is to, to sort of set up, but just making that. That lighter investment before we, we do something, you know, that either has a cost or we can open that. You know, once it's out there, they were, I mean, obviously we're talking about it now, but it's not. That's one, one topic, but I, I think coming into it is.
Kind of along being informed that we just do a little paragraph at the beginning of the survey saying, okay, so. This is what we know how many fires have started here by fireworks, how many injuries happened near fireworks, you know. So there was that, there were primary center and how many, you know. That's affected with PPS, taking with fireworks and, you know, blah, blah, blah. And then after, you know, they've got some that there, it's not just, you know, opinion. Thank you.
So the, the entry vote of this survey, advisory vote is gonna be. Either, there'll either be a motion to ban fireworks in Duall. Or there won't be based on the results of whatever we decide to do.
I think my personal hope with a survey would be, and this is the beauty of a survey versus an advisory vote. It's you can ask a little more complicated questions. So for me personally, you know, you see some communities with high restrictions. They don't allow aerial fireworks, but maybe they still, they allow a little more than sparklers, maybe they still allow the fountains. And I know some people would want to do a sweeping no, and I know there's complications from, you know. Uh, an enforcement perspective for, there's a lot of factors in this whole thing. But I think that for me personally, what I would want to see from a survey would be kind of delving into that and finding out. What people's real view is, cause if you just ask, say yes or no, you will get, you know, two buckets. But I think there's a lot in between there and we might be surprised. And we've definitely had some surveys where I thought the community wanted something and, oh yeah, they don't, or maybe they want it, but not there or, you know, so. For me, it would be relatively, you know, low cost in terms of staff time, um. And other factors weigh, I like the idea if you can look into the code restriction to try and make it a little more. You know, so somebody can't go in and answer it twenty times or something like that, but, um. Yeah, so I mean, for, for my perspective, that is a great place to start. And then that would give council, yeah, like what you're saying, houses then, I mean. You might see that people are like, I hate every single kind and I want to pull out and, you know, and you might see people kind of mixed. What my guess would be, um, but, and they might say, hey, I kind of want something in between, or I feel like the emergency. You know, uh, thing is enough, um, for really dry years. I don't, I'm sure we're gonna see that trending more. For a year though, so I think there's a lot, uh, and I like what Ron said too, is that information point, you know, and. I always want to be careful about making sure people have information without it crossing the line and trying to persuade them a certain way on the survey too. So I want to make sure they have good information that really this is coming forward, because every year. On some level, I think this last year was a pretty light year for me personally, though I know, I think the city did get emails about fireworks. You know, and generally we'll get emails every year about like, you know, or there were fires or something like that. So I think you have your data and then really though, we're bringing this forward because we want to be responsive to our community. And we don't really know, I mean, I think it's probably still fairly mixed. I don't know what side of the line it falls on yet, so. Um, some kind of action or maybe we see such a result from the survey that we're like, I don't think this. Constitutes us doing anything because it's not clear, I mean. But I think it would be a good show to say, we're, we're trying to listen, we're trying to figure out what our community wants and. I think that would be the result. It's just making sure that they know we're trying to figure out what exactly they want. Um, and at the end of the day, you know, make some kind of decision, whether it's to do nothing or to do something or something in between. That kind of, all right, so is everyone on board with some kind of ser, did you raise your hand? So, okay. But I mean, in general, is everyone on board with some kind of survey and then like some information, fact finding type stuff and go ahead.
Yeah, I would be on board with a survey. I also do like be super careful that no one who gets the survey feels like we're being persuasive in our families. That come forward, even if they're legitimate facts, sometimes it can rub people the wrong way, that they feel like they're being led and they're answered. Um, and I just, I would want people to feel like we were disrespecting them by trying to leave them, so. Anyway, I have, I hope that makes sense. Um.
Oh, okay, oh, I know, I think I saw that you had posted something. Not yet, no, I have, yeah, um, I have a council member, um, WordPress. And I had put together this like ponder prompt type thing and it's a form that goes directly to my city email. And so if somebody fills it out, it'll say what the topic was, and so I could interchange the topic, that kind of thing. So I, I had some questions laid out already that are things I've been thinking about. Knowing that it had been brought up and say, hey, does this council want to look at it, consider it? So, um, no, I haven't gotten any responses, isn't a big deal, for sure. Yeah. Uh, Director Thomas?
Would you like us to get an estimate cost on the thirty, for three minutes?
Like a mailing one or? I think it would be, would that be helpful to council to at least know what the number is for the mailing survey? Or are you only interested in a digital?
I think I would like. Yeah, I, I think I would like, essentially if it could fit on a postcard and these, how much difference does the cost present of postcard or two? Uh, one sheet in an envelope?
Uh, it's, it's not a ton.
Not a ton, right?
It's not a ton.
Okay.
But then you would definitely push them off or paper, you know, like for mailing it off to us. It just need a QR code, it's not, the postage is probably gonna be a lot less than the actual.
Cause my preference would be to do. A survey that's not just online, that end up with people, rather it end up physically a sheet to remind them to do it. And not just end up on social media. That's my.
Yeah, this would be definitely like, it would email out to like all of our community, which include our business community where you could fake out. The business team, so we would make those be choices as well. And then we would want, if we felt interested, we would look at the limited edition, where it's doing more for probably one per.
Wow. Yeah, I would, um, definitely be interested to know the cost and that way we could weigh it. Um, because I don't know, um, until I know what that number is, but I definitely agree that. The, you know, it is so costly, but like some people just aren't on. Online, you know, and I, I want to make sure it's inclusive, um, at all levels, so, um, that's tough. But I think having the cost would help us figure it out, at least know that. And then, I mean, does, so first, yeah, does council, reiterating Director Thomas's question, does council want to know the cost of a mailing survey? Just to know, I think that's a pretty nominal time investment. And then what about just knowing the cost of an advisory vote? Cause I know some people said that's interesting, but it would be helpful to know. How expensive that can be, is that something you would want to find out or are you just not interested at all?
I think we heard a message there.
Okay. Alright.
We have, uh.
So last year we paid twenty thousand dollars as a city. For all of our elections last year. And so depending on if you put it, like say, you, obviously you would put on a special election, because that would be very costly. But if you put it in August, your deadline is May, um, if you put it for November.
So.
It's August, yeah, so May is for the August and then August is the deadline for the November election.
And to be realistic about it as well, I, cause I remember when we put, um, transportation benefit district thing on. But there's quite a bit of work that goes into putting something on. So for example, doing it this year, if that's the direction the council wanted, would not be feasible, because it's not budgeted for and all those other things and just the workload of that. So I, I mean, is that correct, right? Like realistically, it would be next year or something like that, if we wanted something to go on a ballot.
I think, you know, that would be a choice, you know, of the council, and then you could do a budget on any private survey or. For either one.
But I mean, just workload wise, it just seems to me to be a little unreasonable for.
Yeah.
Did you have?
Yeah, what year was the advisory vote?
Yeah, it was before all fields and technology levies, so it was, um, two thousand.
Twenty-six and eight, fifteen or next one, um, like ten years ago.
But I can say the opposition to having fireworks allowed was only one, um, so. And the risk has gotten much higher. Significantly higher, um, when that advisory vote occurred. We didn't have to have, uh, we didn't have an emergency ordinance to allow us to ban fireworks if the fire indices met a certain threshold. We've actually had to do that now, um, and we had to evaluate it on multiple years, um. And that alone takes a significant amount of staff time and cost. Um, especially last year when we weren't getting, um, all information from the fire district at the time. Uh, that actually created a significant amount of cost and staff time in that week leading up to for the July. Uh, because ordinance does require the, um, fire official in charge make the recommendation based on scientific data.
And any other thoughts or comments about this? So it sounds like we might be in agreement to start with the survey to get an estimate on what that looked like mailing. It out versus strictly online, um, and then go from there? Alright. No, we don't need to make a mark on here and how it's pretty much, it's just me by consensus. So, okay, um, let's see, we still have some time left. Um, of course, there's always the written reports, you can check out your planning calendar and see if it's coming up. Um, there's a summary report on the survey about our, our show of open spaces and then their request for proposals for the. Unit school, this school sustainability plan, um. That was my, I have a question about one of the reports.
I guess, yeah, sure. About the report, but on the, um, parks, trails and open spaces, the cop plan and the parks, trails and open spaces advisory committee. Do, I ran into someone who applied and they hadn't heard anything, which. Besides acknowledgement that they received it and they weren't sure what the timeline was, is that something you know at this point, the timeline is for?
Can you just talk about it?
Oh.
But we're.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I guess I was wondering then with our luck over time, do we want to take care of? Either the mayor or some of the other standards report or council reports or anything like that? I'm assuming the departmental is the administrator, or do you want to just do the administrator part and get that off? And save your report for the next meeting or?
Um, I can give my report, just making sure we've got time.
Yeah, just fine, yeah, we still have those.
Do you want to bring in the departmental?
I think the mayor can do her part and then actually, or let's do the city.
Okay, yeah, if you want to start with that.
We're, we're just going to give the community development update, so the building department. Um, we're continuing to work on and public enforcement, sometimes it can take quite a while. To do enforcement, we have a couple of fairly serious ones, your health, life, safety. Ones that are, you know, that might be, you know, more minor, like sign code or setback if you, uh, small like long sites. Um, they may take longer than the health, life, safety ones, but we have a couple that are challenging and then we get through them fairly timely. And then we'll report back if, if there are any issues. Uh, our review turnarounds are starting to really quick and get a lot faster. And I would say definitely because of our building permit module, we're getting a review factor, issue and factor, but. It's really important, and finally like even for our town as well. And Kepner was, was asking me what pizza place is going into town and we're gonna get it soon. So we were able to review that within a couple of days, early before we had the software. It could take us a couple of weeks and so it's, it's been a really good tool. Like, as you know, we prepared Title X in four months, that is for the building code. We're getting quote through, we'll have, we have it on the agenda this evening. It will tell you that we are not asking for a decision connect if we're still awaiting. Um, state building could be also under legislative possibly issues and so they change for that, we still. I would say some, uh, whether that state is going to be official on our shipment. For whether it will get deferred, it's unfortunate that it will get deferred. And we did update our fee schedule, which didn't have a big deal, it does take manual input. Um, as you can see, we have issued permits and we try to give you like a gap for at least once a month. That shows kind of a couple of years to be able to channelize, you can see. You know, we're still in a, in a little bit of a higher year than we normally would. Inspectors are definitely pretty high and my guess is we'll continue to see that during the free go, because we could talk so much.
Question?
Yeah, now this slide. Your permits, your bar graph or is that? Okay, those are months, January.
Yeah, that's just the other bar graph on the right hand side, it's just for the. Yeah, that's just the other bar graph on the right hand side, it's just received versus issued by month. So you can kind of see how it. Looking bounce around, if the building code due African in March. We'll probably see a lot of permits into the system, trying to keep the the new code. Uh current development, uh like we said, lots of inspections for both the departments. Now we're continuing to do building permit reviews on a weekly basis. Um we follow up, this is the time of year where we're still doing a lot of like landscape and mitigation follow-up. Um and we created a new process internally for those, both inspections, how we report them. So that anybody that files after us can easily see where we're at in the process for lower. Maintenance or performance. All the planning permission renewed and approved, all new wall sign, anything that's over a hundred square feet, those two divine review, and the planning permissions, we have a lot of those. Uh I knew make a notice, that land of buildings has sixty five degrees, um building five is lobby. And we need to keep up, since I have the first three. And units in building five, there's still two that they're they're working on, uh. We are, we received the application, and it is for daycare uh for. Uh it's the perpleasance from our market to the park, with the toll brother. Uh we met with the boundary to go over their follow-up questions, and even since I did this um last week. We had a meeting with somebody that would like to do a fairly large indoor uh flight facility off of Big Rock Road. So we're gonna be meeting with four hundred here in kind of weeks, and full of work is actually gonna be part of that team, because. We have uh utilities that are already set for that area, and making sure that we can make sure everything fits. Then because there's five lots there, we have a development agreement, requires certain aspects to be developed out, and we can make sure we go through our meeting on. Four kind of, I mean, that's gonna be one of the first, and I'll call it a big project. And they might need more than a lot, which would be often do, cause they are required to build, and they're fifty thousand square feet. Of non-residential space by a certain um, the liquid office and. And we're gonna be on, well, we actually have work, and they're planning, we're going to be, we'll see this evening, onboarding. Running commissioner, we're almost finished with the mobile food unit, uh. We have probably a lot of questions on their VEs. As you might know, and that part of what building works when we've been doing. Um I thought we will be coming back with President Nathan in May, to look at. This kind of brings some of the facts and data forward. We actually went to a seminar webinar last month, it was just specifically on short-term rentals. Um there's a lot about, you know, kind of market trend, where they're going right or not, not necessarily, it was much about policy. But it did help us understand why we're getting more here for welfare and for me, you know. Um we're done with twenty twenty four rocket. Uh we are doing continued work from our consultant for both our conference of the plan, can teach us plan, so. For example, right now, we're working through um the draft survey that will go out to community and things like that. Um we'll call it the. Done, my guess is by the end of this week or early next week, and then that would then go out with. Probably that would be something about. Um we did review obviously the practice of the consultant, we're working on the final um memo for that, that you can see, we kind of have like a cheap. Like summary that we're gonna post to our first, so we'll be face brand eight, and then once we get the memo summary, then then we'll post, we'll post that there as well. And then, uh okay, please. You have the boards and commissioners, we don't, we go into, we believe that we have been participating on board committees, they're back up and running. Like you get a little low like for the end of the year, and then you kind of jump right back into them. I think our biggest challenge right now is we just have not been able to go to all of these. You know, kind of advisory group meetings, cause we just don't have the staff bandwidth right now, so we're we're gonna try to figure that out and see what we. Do moving forward, that's just really big policy here. Um you can see that we did, and that is actually a picture of a couple of weeks ago. Um for building five. So this is our first art by a lot of. Live in the field, welcome. Well, the TQ has focus group meeting is on two twenty sixth, and thank you to the planning commissioners and council members. That have either been, you know, volunteered or recruited, and so customer McCandry can up number for planning, nor around me, probably, probably by three committee. Members, uh the first meeting is a focus group meeting, and there's two focus group meetings on the twenty sixth, the work period of. Um our department, and you open house is scheduled for three twenty six. And so that's exciting as well. Uh the conference of plan survey will go out in a few weeks, uh the confend committee will begin its work in late March. And so an email will go out to everybody that's on that committee as well. But we do have the council member, and the planning commissioner as well, and they're the ladies, so we're excited. It's gonna start to get busy for the department and for our key, if you're like.
Meeting everyone, Steve, Steve first. I don't think Laura, like for her, she's already busy, so it's not, it's not. It's gonna get busy. It's here. Yeah, it's due next week. Uh okay, okay, on public works. I will have the final scope and fee for the Big Rock Ball Field Phase Two design, the next packet for the fifth. Um we are picking a. Um. Design alternate based on preliminary work we did. So that'll be part of our discussion, like making sure that's where we wanna go, we had our consultant review all the PTO stuff that's ongoing, and do a quick level of sort of study. To understand the needs of the community relative to national standards, so. Pretty good discussion, um so that'll be in there. Uh flower pots, I didn't hear all the question earlier, but I met today with Seth Thomas from the high school and the important culture. Class, not just the club, um so they're very willing and able to do some work, um. Timing is gonna be super tight relative to due holidays, so they can't commit to anything prior to Thursday weekend, which is their big fundraiser, when they do all their costs. But he said, everything comes Monday, after that, we'll get them done, they'll build them that week. They can harden them off in their garden center, and then we can grab them the week prior to, probably Friday prior to due holidays. Saturday. So we would have them up for a week, and. It's an even more complicated weekend, Memorial Day is the Saturday. Or the Monday prior to due holidays the next weekend. So it's gonna be pretty tight, um we wanna use the community as as a resource, uh he's super gunful about it, and there's no qualms about it. We talked a lot of details today. So. Um I spoke in that Harvard store. And we are working on what that will look like. Um if you didn't know Seth Thomas, the instructor up there, he was the flower world manager of like. Putting it all together for, I think it's nine years, seven years, but yeah, he was. He's in the game for sure, um it was a really, I had a great meeting, um. Still a lot to work on, uh he was pretty opposed to a formal metal frame that we would then infill. He thought it's just simpler to go with the pre-pressed pots that they are made of fibers. You know, he's pretty like. Very open and, I love it, um cause you know, you're wasting money, because you're gonna cover it with massive new plants, like that's our goal, is to have a roof, and that's the style, so he was. Very uh like, you need to say anything, but no, no, we haven't bought it yet, that was the plan, but, you know, plans can change, just first go around. I'm more than happy to try the pressed fiber pots, they don't work out, we haven't lost them, you had to have them anyway in a metal frame. Backed it, so. Mentioned that this MVP, and if you get the background, we'll start looking at all this, but yeah, Harvard store will supply the plans at cost. I'm not super concerned about quotes on that, we'll do some quotes just to have uh handy. But they're figuring the cost through the markup, and that's on work with that, working through lives. Um you know, it'll be. Yeah. Good experience, um he's very young, like I said, done before, he has friends in the in the business on both sides, I'll go to the. Private side and and building and selling, and then the city side and deploying um, or some is complex, so. Those good meetings today. Um so the. TBD report is on the website, the. For folks that has to go over here, so I'll on DVD page, introduction of the district. To summarize of the annual financing plonation. Um ninety percent of plans are on the way for one forty second phase two, so work on CBA, getting that all. Prep for the summer time, and that just extends from Tucson Gate. On the alignment of what's turning into one forty second for the. Rounds the curve from the east on down to Tucson, but. Um. Sewer system, smoke testing is on schedule for Thursday. Uh we have been, if you haven't checked the page out on our website. Um you know, we have said this, you know, home responsibility, we haven't committed anything either way, we'll see how all this shakes out. Um once we identify where all the smoke is coming from, but we're under the final stages of preparation. To find all the mammals and have that set of lives. And then, and Benny has been working uh all over town from Spelva. Maine uh to uh the Royals.
Have we done this before?
Uh we, the last time we did it, like nineteen ninety nine. We've had on the list for a long time, and. I don't know, we just wanna get through our lists, and it's an important endeavor, and. You know, processing raw rainwater, always our feed blends, we. We're, we're excited to see what happens, that zone is currently saying, based on the measurements of all the area. Responsible for sixty five percent of the money. Stuff a lot in one zone. Yeah, uh big money is it's on intercepting storm feature in the service. There's not a lot of other ways. It would be pretty consistent in old town that they were all like ten percent along the way, but they had one at such a large number over all the other zones. That were all built in the same area. Something. Should be. Um. Perimeter selecting, we could have a contract for perimeter supply procurement in the package for the fifth as well. Those are tight timelines to get it deployed and onto the end of the building, you know, in eight weeks. Uh solicit quotes. I think we're working with a a pretty good group, uh they're very helpful, and you know. It's going well, we had a nice outing, all the staff between public building and public, public building and. Plan, these and that, you know, um but yeah, there's a lot of things. That you won't really realize, so. It was a little overwhelming, um but even though what showed it were low, we made it through, and. The good ladies who were helping us out, our PMs were super impressed, like. One, that was a big group, two, you guys didn't fight, and nobody like went mad and put their foot down, and so they go in, and some things like that, or yeah, so. Fairly common, apparently, we didn't bring libraries and fighters in for that people, so, anyway, we'll have some information next time, and next one. Uh so, we haven't heard, both working, we're working with staff on sign-in for the parks. So we do, and of course, we have two of our commissioners, uh for, you know, professional career are crackers. But they're very into this, um I was there for the first meeting, about the second, but to the tone of like. Font, size of font, like a hobby on roadway trips, like it was very like. Too boring, it was just low-key, but they were very into it. So this is what they came up with, so we staff gave a few that we had seen as actables and provided into the group, and they created this, so the colors are. Straight off of our current color palette, um nothing is new, there is a sign difference, obviously, in the left and the right, a larger park will get a bigger sign, a smaller park, like a pocket park. I'll leave it a small time, so. Um we are working on finalizing this, obviously, there would be a cruise ship, but we are using these standard. Um nationwide parking emblems for our parks, and that's the intent right then. Although they did a great job, they were very engaged and. Like super. This. Uh that was a good experience. Next one. A couple of road project updates for you folks, this doesn't directly affect us. But this is one point fourth next week, close twenty eight ninety nine, it says business hours. Um as you notice if you drive by and it's posted, what I found, if you have a website, it says differently, so it's not even in the right month. So a couple of discrepancies, Jason has been engaging, we'll try to ask him which is the right date, next week, twenty eight ninety nine, or March. So, uh they're cleaning that, they're done.
It's like, you know, they're investing all the colors and then they. Yeah. Kind of, even the last time they cleaned it, they didn't do sort of a hundred percent, and then there's some group, I didn't know if they were graffiti, or they were setting fake colors.
It looks like a combination of, they're gonna clean it, but yes, they were. I've been covering graffiti and testing some colors. From what I could see. Uh so yeah, that's next, well. It says out in the world on sign next week, the website says next month. Uh next one. Uh as we begin to go north in April, they are starting a project at the two oh three and Hyatt Road Entertainment. That'll be the kidney bean double roundabout, um if you go to the website, I didn't have a link in here, it is. Uh they have a video model facting, it's gonna be quite a while, um but. So four, four they close during April, and then they will be working through the summer, so I I assume the four they close in April is affected by past in the area, so they can also. Travel cars through and then work, and then it says they should be done by the end of. And then, and at least, if you haven't yet heard, uh Woodville Duvall Road is closing this summer in the valley. Between West Pointe and two oh three. So I'm excited. So sorry, that was in line, uh so yeah, not the main bridge, but the smaller bridge, which is the bridge number one. Right after River Road. Where's the river road, redecking. That's what we know, they didn't reach out to us, we found it on our own, mobile discipline, so.
We have a lot of.
Mayor, I was just gonna say, um. I'm hopeful that they are coordinating with Salomon County on this, considering that. Or seventy five percent of our daily traffic comes from Salomon County. Um and rerun traffic, so um. If you need assistance for the government relations contact, let me know.
Yeah, Jason is working with their. Communications personnel, we like, so we found it. We're sitting.
I was just gonna ask, you like, you know, last year, we had the yard closed, and the closure was one of the reasons why. Our food got to the open up again, wasn't that traffic, because we have also the music in the park, it's longer to get. Definitely, it's hard to, it was a little smaller, it was there.
Yeah, I also heard it, uh the back front gave a very large local resume that was greatly impacted last summer, and that wasn't even a closure of the bridge. Which would be a close from Woodville Duvall. Um also, we have a lot of events, especially at the launch, the newer than. Um and if all like. When it was, Woodville Duvall was closed, people would still meet around Duvall, they could proposit bridge and take weapons. So now all traffic will be using. This coming south, unless, like the mayor mentioned, that there could be some kind of detour that starts ahead, like I don't know if that other roundabout project could be done, and they can send people over. Back there, I mean. I don't know, I mean, this is, I don't know what role the city could take, but I feel like there needs to be some very strong, um impossible. Advocacy, because, I mean, just for our local businesses, our events, just the quality we make this summer.
Uh I was just gonna say, with both of those projects happening at once, that traffic really has to, um it's going to naturally. In theory, filter across the valley to start with, um because people are not, we're not gonna be stuck in the. Um, because people are not, we want to be stuck in the backup. Um, at Tople Road or on Tople.
Yeah.
Um, High Bridge. Um, but, uh, you know, there are multiple ways to get to that cross valley way, um, the roads are not. Uh, conducive to heavy traffic, but, um. I'm hopeful that King County will, um, be responsive to that and perhaps. Um, Wash Duck will be more responsive, um, reaching out to them to coordinate with county, who knows, there are another question.
Um, I would just reiterate it, not to say that this isn't hurt from all the reasons, it killed me, it was already slow and that just looked like an eon.
One thing I was gonna add, I didn't. Dr. Let's see, um, there are any D major carways overlay, one, two, or three, four, five. This summer as well.
Um, I just wanted to show you an early, I, I know that, you know, and you have a lot of area that you have all these, you know, improvement and construction projects that they can cycle on through. But I'm not sure that they're seeing what ends up happening for us to be, this is closed for a chunk of every summer, or, you know, worst case scenario. So it'd be nice if, um, I know some things really need to get done and know we have to do this now, but. You know, if they could, for this stretch, prioritize trying to do more of those things, or receive that feedback in the future of like. Really trying to condense it to, this is the summer, it's really shut down, and we're doing all this stuff that, uh, for some areas might be more helpful than like, okay, well, oh, this summer it's gonna be. Close down too, because we need to do this whole second night, and that's really, it's really hurtful to a lot of businesses, so.
If for my notes, but, uh. You know, Chelsea, I, um, spoke to CNN on like the whole thing, so that can all be set when I, they already have. I assume Cynthia will provide some.
I had talked to, um, Cynthia and I had asked, you know, is it something that, like. In terms of money, because I, of course, you get to handling if, if they're allowed to do that, the permission type thing, but, you know, out of the economic development fund, I mean. How much would it really be to provide some money for whole thing, that is an economic development, flowers are pretty, we're doing flower baskets, that kind of thing, I mean, what, a couple hundred dollars or something, it couldn't be very much, and so. If it's something that, you know, we could add to the agenda, or just if you need head nod consensus or something like that from council to get it going, because I know it is. Time dependent, um, I, you know, we could definitely bring that up during the council meeting when, if you need some kind of action to just greenlight the money from that fund.
Yeah, I don't know much at all about it, other than they wanted to do something, I know the valley doesn't count, right, that's our property. We have the entrances in town, which. They came in the past with some sort of, uh, you know, volunteer efforts, so we didn't. Not opposed to anything in this guy, I don't know much.
In case you are forwarded the email, um, the. The reason they were asking specifically in kind of time with them, the entrance is a future farmer's, or American week, the last week of February, so. Maybe next week, until they were trying to coordinate something. Around that time, and I don't know how critical it is that they do an event that exact timeframe, but I think that was, and that was left with gold, I think you need to get it in for the warming up too much.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, and the other thing I was thinking of economic development money was. I don't know if that, there's also, we have the, um. The voice scout or community projects money for community enhancement stuff, I don't know if that is something that. I don't know exactly how that works, that decides how that's been for that.
So probably either or, and the other topic, I know I spoke to CNN now about the overlook and depot part, about what it, what it is, or what it could be. Um, I did have an eagle scout working on a different project, but I had another kid reach out. So he seemed to be a little less. Communicative, but not alone, I worked for, if we could, otherwise, yeah, it can be built, but. I don't have an estimate on lumber, but lumber, lumber is gonna be pretty soon to configure. But it will be nice.
That's it. Uh, Congressman Rafflin, I think I might have missed the answer or didn't understand the answer, but on. So when you said that there was the focus root meeting on the twenty sixth, does that mean anyone who had been selected for the PTO S. Advisory committee would have already been told.
So that's really a question there. If that is not the advisory committee, that's the focus group, which are our users in one of the groups in the school district, and then the other one is our environmental tribe, so those are the two vote. We gather information from one meeting, and then once we're done with that, then we're gonna push up our P two S. Committee, and essentially, we're taking the vast majority of those applied, I mean, we had a really, I feel like we had a really good turnout. And we wanted to keep it, you know, around between ten, no more than fifteen, and high group committee members, but a lot of the man, and we've got multiple. Projects going on, that's what we're gonna see for the P two S, then the thing for the comp plan.
Okay, so they probably know if they were selected or not.
Uh, they, they will know as, um, after we have our meeting next week, right, or, yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Did you want to do your mayor's report, did it take sure, what do you have? It shouldn't take long, okay. Um, so, uh, just a quick update, association for Washington cities, um. Committees are starting to ramp up for, uh, preparing for the next legislative cycle. Um, so just got the, today, the policy state committee, state like committee, um, is. Forming, uh, in my role as leadership, I'll be serving on that committee. We have the, uh, Sound Cities Association strong mayors meeting this morning, we have several new strong mayors, um, at the table, so that was really nice to see. Um, it's really funny how. Uh, every single one has come from council as well, um, so actually, of those in attendance, say, all of us came from council before. Uh, coming to the strong mayor position, uh, so we had a very fruitful discussion welcoming them. Uh, and helping them identify, um, you know, things that they. May want to do or not do, et cetera. Um, as well as having a robust discussion on some of the challenges, um, and positive things that we're all facing in our communities right now. Um, the, uh, I've noticed the Sound Cities Association, um, next networking event is March sixth in Liden, uh, so. John Taylor, who was the former director of Department of Local Services in King County, um, who was the first director of Department of Local Services. Has now been appointed as the Department of National Resources and Parks Director of King County. Uh, so that's a big shift, but he will be speaking at that, um, at that event, as well as Josh Brown, the executive director of Houston Regional Council, and others. Um, so definitely, I think, uh, funny, council member, I'll do two, will be one of those as well. Um, so hope to see, uh, a lot of council attend if possible. Um, and then, uh, we've also gotten notice that the next SBJ meeting is March twenty sixth, um, so. It was nice to see, um, council member Naplin, and for the first time, council member, who felt. Um, at the last meeting incarnation, um, and, uh, finally, I. Of course, I had the opportunity to attend the Association of Washington Cities Legislative Action Conference a couple of weeks ago. Um, that was a fantastic conference, significant number of the newly elected officials attended, for those that don't know. Um, of local governments in Washington State, last November alone, twenty four percent. Of all elected officials are now brand new elected officials. Um, so there's some steep learning curves, but the newly elected. Shorts. Um, the event did sell out. Um, lots of opportunity for networking, um, all of the people that I met are very interested in learning. And in particular, learning from, uh, people that have been around a while, um, so that's also really encouraging, some years you get a crop of people that. Come in believing they know everything, and that's usually when the challenges happen at local government, um, is when people don't take the time to learn. The system, learn staff, learn their roles and responsibilities, um, so that's a huge encouragement. Um, despite the uncertainty when you get a new problem, folks like that. Um. As part of that, uh, I had the opportunity to speak with the, uh, director of the Emergency Military Division, uh, Dr. Robert Disel, Dr. Dr. Robert Disel. Um, briefly, uh, but one of the items that, um, was a topic of discussion is fire risk, and in particular, Western Washington fire risk. Uh, so his comment was, we are one. Event away from being a paradise California in Wash, Western Washington. Um, and noting that Duval is one of the highest risk communities in Washington, Western Washington for that type of. So, um, as we move forward with some of our other policy discussions, um, particularly regarding fireworks in the high risk. Um, activity, um. I'm hoping that we will be able to bring in some information from the state on that as well. Um, to inform those discussions and inform those risks and factors that they're seeing as, um. Really, um, impactful to our communities, uh, especially with the potential loss of, um, life and structures if an event like that occurs. Um, he also did emphasize that, um, it's not just. Your fire department were state's responsibility, your county's responsibility, the city has a primary responsibility and role. In making sure that we're not just prepared, but are able to respond when those events do happen. Um, because they are happening in Western Washington and, um. Unless a significant amount of funding is spent to mitigate against the impacts. Um, we will, um, see those events worsen over the next several years. Um, which of note, uh, Climate Commitment Act funds from the. Uh, carbon tax initiative. Could in theory fund all of the issues surrounding, um, managing climate change, but there is an initiative. Um, that is qualified signatures wise for the ballot that is likely to take all of that funding away. Uh, which, if that funding does go away, um, will be on the hook for all of that, um, funding and preparation. Um, and, uh. Would could significantly impact our ability to protect the community going into the future. So really important and impactful, it's amazing how much of within a conversation can, can, um. Bring out, but, um, there you have it, and with that, I have no additional reports, as you mean, any questions for the mayor?
Okay, so with that, you know, we have seven minutes before council, I, we could probably just save council reports for the meeting if anyone has any, um. And we'll go ahead and adjourn it at six fifty PM, so we're gonna take a break.
On the Tuesday, February twenty, two thousand twenty four, Duval City Council, would you please rise and join me in the class? Pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. Into repulsive, for which it stands. In this world, the letters can just grow. Quickly, please take the roll.
Mayor Orfordlander.
Here.
Mayor Orfordlander.
Yeah.
Mr. Ratafend. Mr. Chaper. Mr. Murphy, here, Mr. Toffel, here, Miss Thaple.
Yeah.
Is who felt?
Yeah. We have a quorum. Under conditions and corrections to the agenda, um, after discussion with the city administrator, I would like to propose removal of the discussion of the public records bouncing from the agenda this evening. Um, the city administrator has set a deadline for council response of February twelve. Um, responses were not received until Saturday, and then a whole other list of responses and amendment requests today. Um. Well, aware, the city administrator is out of town, um, I did talk to her on vacation today. Um, and her request in conference was that this be pulled from the agenda. Um, this evening, uh, especially because there are. Um, points about, um. Discussion of the role of the city administrator in this process and this policy, um, so neither of us feel it's appropriate for discussion for that to occur or account for being present. Um, are there any objections to that? Seeing that, are there any other additions or corrections to the agenda? Mayor, I'd like to move to excuse council members papers, see, let us not even not be here today. Thank you. All right, any other additions or corrections to the agenda? Councilman Rafflin?
Did we decide if we needed to make a motion or do we want to get the. Many for.
I was not for, I mean, if I could just elaborate, I, we, there was discussion at the cow and asking if we needed to bring up. To set a cap or pass money from the Economic Development Fund, if we wanted to provide money for the, is it the FFA group to. Purchase bulbs to plant on city property on some of the corners, or maybe the main issue is the permission aspect, and there would be such a nominal amount of money, um. So if it's only a few hundred dollars, I would, that is something that we can absorb within the administration's budget. Um, or public works, however, the bigger issue is. Um, permission and liability, um, and, and planning about bulbs in center places and what have you, and so. Um, I believe that that final decision is best up to Director Monishevsky after the conversation with the.
Yeah, I just thought it was really the financial portion of it.
If it's only a hundred dollars, we have, we have, we have discretionary that can be moved throughout. Thank you. Um, do we have a motion to approve this evening's council agenda? Right. All those in favor of bringing this evening's council agenda, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Um, uncomments for the audience, I'm just gonna read into the record, um, our updated rules on public comments. So during, before we ask for public comment from the audience. Um, during the designated public commentary period within city council meetings, individuals are allowed a three minute speaking duration, while representative organizations may address reference five minutes. Before presenting, finally disclose your full name and presidential affiliation with the city, it is strongly advised by the city to submit verbal comments in written form and expedite subsequent correspondence. Written comments must be received by the city clerk's office no later than noon on the meeting day, addressed to P O box one three zero zero, Duval, Washington, nine eight zero one nine, order. One five five three five Main Street Northeast. Or, uh, sent by email. Please be aware that the city council and its boards and commissions solely entertain public comments from attendees present at the meeting in person. The council does not accept handouts or printed material during public comment sessions. Information intended for the mayor or the city council should be directed to the city clerk, will be disseminated following the submitter's instructions. Upon receipt, the city clerk will receive written public comments and subsequently forward them to the city council or the relevant board commission. It's important to note, however, that written comments will not be orally presented during the council or applicable board commission meetings, instead, they will be integrated into the meeting's amendments. With that, if we have any members of the audience that would like to speak, please, uh, feel free to, for, for you to have like. Or three to five minutes, depending on if you're an organization.
Hi, everyone, my name is Kira Avery, I'm the executive director at the Snow Valley Senior Center in Carney, I believe the city clerk ordered my. Uh, comments and our annual fourteen earlier today, and so I just kind of wanted to come up here to basically say thank you to the city of Duval, to the, for the support. Um, of the Snow Valley Senior Center, so the senior center is the only place serving older adults in the Lower Salome Valley. And the funds received the Duval Human Services Grant in twenty twenty three were spent on direct food and supplies costs to support the meal program at Snow Valley Senior Center. This program, uh, provides made from scratch meals Monday through Friday for those over sixty, and it does suggest a donation of five dollars. And in twenty twenty three, the Snow Valley Senior Center saw one hundred, excuse me, one thousand four hundred sixty four individuals. Uh, with one hundred and eighty nine identifying that they live in Duval, back in twenty twenty three, we served nine thousand six hundred thirty two meal. To four hundred and two unique individual, sixty five of which identified that they're living in Duval, so. Although we do recognize that, uh, there are more residents of Duval that we, except for, although these are the ones that we have complete demographics for. The Duval Human Services Grant made it possible for us to provide these meals to local seniors, and it empowers older adults. To be an integral part of the Salome Valley, so that no one is isolated and alone, but active and involved. A key to the community dining program is not just the food, but the social, socialization and community connection we all need. In our annual survey, people, uh, come because the meals are delicious and enjoyable, and because it's affordable to them. Our vision is that the Salome Valley older adults are inspired, supported, and empowered if they eat well, and the city of Duval support in twenty twenty three with this grant, makes aging an awesome opportunity. Uh, here's a little bit about what our participants say is the difference, uh, you make in their life. Uh, one of our seniors said, thank you for, for providing a place for good food, good friends, wonderful outings, and great classes. And another said, thank you for lunch, which was so delicious and nutritious, and leftovers make my dinners. So I just wanted to share that with you guys, thank you again for your support, and also, uh, we sent over your, the, our twenty twenty three gratitude report, which has information about. How we ended the year financially, lists more, you know, the grants that we got, and the YouTube wall is mentioned for their support, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to provide public comments to the? All right, uh, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda, we have a motion, uh, to approve this evening's. All right, uh, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda, we have a motion, uh, to approve this evening's consent agenda, so. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Uh, moving on to schedule the items, um, we did both the mayor's report and city administrator report during committee of the whole with extra time, are there any council members that have a report? Let me approach them, I can.
Yeah, I had sent an email to council about our last coffee with the Snohomie Tribe and the city of Carnation. The next upcoming date is Monday, March eighteenth at eight thirty A M, and this one will be in Duval, um. Currently, Councilmember Shaker has let me know if he would love to attend, I probably could, um, it'd be nice to not have more than three, uh, just because usually there's two or three from each group, so. Um, if you're interested, you can let me know now, and I can forward the invite to you, um, and if you're not sure, you can get back to me. Email and, no? Okay, well, email me later if you decide you want to attend, thank you.
And the council members of three months soon. Seeing none, we'll move on to our only two items, um, on the agenda this evening, both in business, first up is Agenda Bill twenty four dash twelve, building code improvements for discussion. With Director Laura, the city of community development, and Brian Kayler, building official. Good evening, Brian, good to see you.
Hey, good evening, mayor, uh, good evening, council. Brian Kayler, building official, um, I brought along Mark Lawrence, uh, from Eastside Fire, he's our fire marshal, um. Bringing him on for, uh, any questions the council might have, um, again, bringing forth Agenda Bill twenty four dash twelve for the building code updates. Um, provided a cleaner version of the strike and delete for council, um, so really opening it up to the floor if anyone has any questions. For us regarding the code.
Councilmember Naplin?
Hi, yeah, this question, um, might not be, um, more logistical communication, but I have seen show up in my feed another. Jurisdiction that was just giving a heads up to the community that this was coming, more of a, I I know that I had asked at the last meeting, and it sounds like. Some of the larger players that you work with have been notified of this upcoming change, but, um, I'm not sure if the general public in Duval maybe knows it's coming. So I don't know if that's something that could go out on the general. So when we, uh, I'm not really sure that that's way to communicate with the residents that live here that might want to know that. Something that we can do.
Yeah, we can definitely look at maybe doing a flyer or, uh, you know, the public outreach for that to let them know that what the codes are, uh, code changes are coming down. Thanks.
I just wanted to ask, and Brian, please confirm this, but we have already started making information out on our building page. All for the code changes, and we've been done a couple months ago.
Yeah, yeah, we did, before January.
Councilmember Marshall.
And this was really just for clarification off of a comment that Director Thomas made earlier, I know the March fifteenth date is the date we were targeting for implementation. I think you alluded that there were some questions around the timing, and I was really curious that that was specifically around the date of implementation, or if there was. Discussing in terms of any changes or any material impacts of the material that's already been shared with council.
Yeah, no, thank you for the question, um, we are actively following the State Building Code Council, S B C C. Um, on their meetings and updates, uh, and any revisions, and also following that Senate Bill sixty one twenty, um, as of right now, we haven't, there's no updated information. Um, so what what we proposed or provided on, um, the sixth, that's the most recent information that we have at this time, and, um. In the coming weeks, I I I do see us, uh, possibly getting some more information, and then I'll be able to relay that to the, the council.
Any other questions? Director Thomas, do you have anything to add?
Uh, as, uh, Brian Keller said, he will bring forward the final ordinance of the next meeting. Ending no changes of the legislature for the, um, state building.
One more, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I heard you see over there, all right, excellent. Um, well, thank you both for being here tonight, uh, Mr. Lawrence, nice to meet you virtually, and, uh, glad to have been serving our community. So thank you both for being here this evening and enjoying the rest of your night.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
All right, uh, now we're moving on to our last, uh, item in business, Agenda Bill twenty four dash thirteen, selection of project for transportation improvement board branch. For discussion and our decisions with the line of chess.
Um, good evening, mayor, councils, that is good, uh, Steve, I definitely put words. Um, and then we'll get you to follow up maybe the Agenda Bill on the emergency. Uh, so transportation improvement board, um, a quick step forward, anyone back it for your consideration came to us very recently, um. And the court pulls up some some date deadlines, and essentially today, we need to turn it in by March first. As the resurrection of the complete street program, uh, we need to go. Uh, so, I guess, yeah. Uh, so. Some some considerations, we turned it in by March first, definitely ready to build this, and we have to get it done. So that leaves a little time for nothing else, other than something we have in hopper, and luckily, the one forty second street phase two project is a complete street eligible program, it's a road without a complete street, I mean, no curb better. Or sidewalk on one or either side. So we know that was the quick to the project, we did meet with Greg from T I B, um. He's very supportive of the project, we talked about funding, I don't believe we really need council, but G I B always likes it to be councilmatic because. Of funding, however, this one's in the budget already, but we thought it's nice to just end up putting here, that will help our, uh, packet and our application with T I B. Um, he suggested we go for four hundred hourly, which is almost the balance of the city's disor- vulnerability in the project. So that's, uh, good news, and maybe we don't use obviously backfill other projects, uh, it's all. City money that we were planning on, and some community development locker money to the tune of eighty grand for design and two hundred million for construction. So there's not a lot there, um. If there's any question, I think the big thing is time and. Why it's so fast, I don't know. T I B is the T I B, so when they say they have money to spend, we expect to get it. I saw that, I don't have a lot, uh, maybe if you aren't familiar with the where this is, uh, you can scroll down the amount. In between two seventy fifth and two seventy one forty second, that's the quick call of a design, but if you keep going to this, it can actually be the last page. Uh, orange section is constructed, and then yellow is in design and moving forward. Questions, comments, there is. I think there'd be any, but we just wanted to be formal and provide it. Sorry, there aren't other options that we can build this.
Seems like council's good.
And he, I'm open, and we're going to go.
I move to suspend council procedure in section five six regarding additional reviews. And approve the Agenda Bill twenty four thirteen, authorizing mayor to direct staff to apply for transportation improvement board complete streets grant. For the northeast one hundred and forty seven plates, phase two, construction.
Second. Any further discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all of them favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes.
Thank you.
And with that, I cannot believe I'm saying this. Uh, this is a record even from. Years past, like, this, I think this is an official record.
This is what, I mean.
But unless there are objections, we are adjourned.
They would have had this.
A little how to.
Four years ago.